Regular Hancock County Commissioners Meeting Order. Draw your attention to the agenda, and I believe the latest version, Rebecca, would indicate that jail is six. If you have an agenda with jail as item six, that's the most recent version, correct Rebecca?
Yes.
Okay. Sunny, before we adjust and approve the agenda, do you have an item this morning? Or you just hear the... Listen. You're muted, Sunny. Can't hear you. You're muted.
I think he's just here for the nod, Sunny, if you're just here for the agreement. Okay, we've got to sum up on that.
Is that on here this morning?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I just assumed you were going to listen to other things, Bill.
Right, very good. Gentlemen, I'll draw your attention to the agenda. Are there any adjustments?
I'm going to move to approve the agenda as presented and distributed on April 5th. I'm jumping ahead here. With the exception of removing items five C, five D, and seven B. And those are under the Sheriff's Department and the RCC.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Now notate that that was by request of the department managers. Any other discussion or adjustments? Hearing that all in favor of the motion, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I and myself, our agenda is established. I would now move to our public discussion this morning. Reference the Bull Hill Wind Farm valuation adjustment. I would recognize Lisa Wynot and Justin McMahon from Main Revenue Services. Good morning, folks.
Good morning.
And Scott, would you set the basis for this discussion, please?
Sure, Commissioners. So I received a call from Ms. Wynot with regards to... And I may, Lisa, I'll let you clarify later if I get the terminology correct, but I believe it's a taxation adjustment based on evaluation correction and in the amount of $57,809.34. So this morning, in talking with Ms. Wynot, you know, I wanted to make sure that the Commissioners understood, so I asked her to come on this morning and clarify. So Lisa, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, good morning. I'm actually going to turn it over to Justin McMahon because Justin is the one who determines the values.
Morning, Justin.
Good morning, Commissioners. So what I can do for you folks, depending on exactly what you're looking for, is would you sort of just like an explanation as to the valuation basis? And then what caused the adjustment, just to give everybody a better understanding? Okay, great. So about a year ago, we started the process of revaluing the entire unorganized territory. What brought that on was just we compare our valuations to what properties sell for within the unorganized territory. And we found that our valuations were much lower than what the properties were selling for. And I say it was a year ago, it was actually probably a little bit longer than that now. And so we went through the process of revaluing the entire unorganized territory. As part of that, I felt that it was necessary to adjust the industrial properties also throughout the unorganized territory for purposes of equity. So what I chose to do was to apply indexes to the wind farms. They provide us with what the cost of the project was broken down originally. And going forward, what we have done is basically depreciated that cost yearly just to show age and wear and tear taking place on the turbines. So we updated those valuations. A few months following the revaluation, we did send out letters informing taxpayers of the increase in the valuations, estimated taxes, so on and so forth. I was contacted by a representative of the wind farm, one of the wind farms, not Bull Hill in particular, questioning just what caused the increase, and they had some concerns. So I felt as though it was something that I needed to look into. So what I did was I looked at some of the resources that they had given me, plus looked in two other resources, you know, mostly just online searches, and also talking to a few appraisers. What I have found, and also actually talking to some other representatives of wind farms just to talk about the industry as a whole. So what I found was that the arguments that this particular person was making were valid arguments. They questioned why increase the cost, the replacement cost on a wind farm that's roughly 10 years old, given the fact that the technology and the equipment that's now used is much superior. And not only is it much more superior, the cost of the wind turbines have actually remained quite stagnant. So you're actually getting a better turbine, basically, for relatively the same amount of money. So what I did was I looked at what we had for wind farms within the unorganized territory, what they had reported for construction costs, and what the actual size, you know, in comparison to the size of the wind farm. So basically, I looked at how many megawatts it was capable of producing and how much it costs per megawatt for construction, understanding that there is going to be a variation in cost depending on site conditions and certain things that they had to go through putting up the wind turbines. So what I saw was that basically the cost to construct the wind turbines, to purchase them and construct them, had indeed sort of... There was a little bit of variation, but in general, it was quite similar comparing the project started in 2009. And then most recently, there was a sort of flurry of projects done in around 2016. So what I could see was that sort of the cost per megawatt to construct these wind farms had not gone up, but yet the technology has. To sort of then make myself feel good about making this adjustment because by all means, it was a large adjustment, and it was something that I wanted to put much thought and care into if I was to grant an abatement for this. So I looked at also what they had reported for yearly generation because another argument is just that, you know, the newer turbines are much more efficient. What makes them more efficient is, you know, the blades are longer, allowing the turbine to run at full capacity at lower wind speeds. So what I found was that the older wind farms that were built in the 2010-ish area, 2009, 2010, they were basically had a capacity factor of right around 30%, which what research I had looked into, that was a reasonable number. Looking at the newer wind turbines, their capacity factor was more like 40% or slightly over that. So 10% higher, but when you look at actually comparing 30% to 40%, it's 25% more production yearly, 25% more income from that energy being produced. And obviously, they're in the business of producing money, producing power and selling it and making money that you really have to sort of take the income into consideration. So that was what brought on the adjustment and sort of the research that I did. Coincidentally, right at the end of sort of the deadline to file for a tax abatement, we received two additional abatement applications, one from Bull Hill and one from another wind farm. Also coincidentally, these were the three oldest wind farms within the unorganized territory. And the rest of the wind farms were basically constructed in and around the 2016 circus. So that also sort of solidified in my mind and in talking with representatives with those newer wind farms who didn't necessarily see a problem with the method of the valuation and the end number, sort of allowed me to feel a little bit better about making these adjustments to the older wind farms because they just... They don't have the newer technology and they just, they don't produce energy like the newer ones do. So that's, you know, that's the basic grounds behind the adjustment. I'm more than happy to try and answer any other questions that you may have.
Okay, so Justin, the $57,809, is that the reduction in their annual tax?
That is the reduction in their annual tax. And I'm actually glad that you brought that up because, you know, another sort of positive aspect of this is that the valuations of the wind turbines thankfully aren't used when we calculate a mill rate due to them being in a TIF district. The mill rates calculated, you know, taking into account county services, the money it costs to send the children to school, so on and so forth. So where the revenue from the wind turbines goes into the TIF account and also some of it is returned to the company, it's not utilized in the calculation of the mill rate. So thankfully, this adjustment didn't necessarily cause any shortfalls in, say, county services. Obviously, it dated into the TIF account. Another good part is that, and I wasn't necessarily aware of this, was the credit enhancement agreement. So from the best of my understandings, there was then with the credit enhancement agreement, there was an overpayment to the developer. And I apologize if I'm breaking up at all. I know that oftentimes my Wi-Fi is subpar, so... But obviously, the developer was over reimbursed as a result of this. So that does sort of help lighten the blow of the abatement amount. But yes, that is, that is correct.
Okay, so gentlemen, if you understand that TIF agreement, we get 30%, is that correct, Scott? Which is a reduction in that TIF agreement, a TIF reimbursement from Bull Hill of somewhere around $17,500. Is that correct, Scott?
Yes.
Justin. Okay, so that's the net effect to us with regards to the adjustment made in the valuation. Gentlemen, you have any questions from Lisa or Justin this morning?
My first question is, you talked about the unorganized territory. Are you talking about all unorganized territories in the state you reevaluate or just in Hancock County?
No, it was the unorganized territory as a whole.
As a whole, okay.
Correct.
So all counties?
Correct. All counties that have unorganized territory located within them.
Yeah. Okay, and you mentioned a couple other abatement requests. Were they of this magnitude or...?
Well, Bull Hill is one of the smaller wind facilities, so actually, your abatement was much smaller in scale in comparison to these other abatements.
But proportionally, Justin, they all got roughly the same...
Percentage-wise, it was practically identical within reason, you know, within 1% or 2%, depending on exactly the specific adjustment. But absolutely, it was treated very similar in style. And given the size of these other wind farms, yes, the valuation decrease was more significant than that that occurred in Hancock County.
Millard?
I have a couple of questions. I guess most of them are directed at Justin too. Because of this difference in capacity factor, is your depreciation schedule going forward, is that going to be at a faster level?
It's the, for purposes of equity, the depreciation will be the same, but there will be other adjustments that are going to sort of affect the speed of this additional obsolescence for whether the inferior turbines apply to the older wind farms. And to be completely honest with you, Millard, in a lot of the research that I've done, California provided a guidance document, and they recommend using the income approach. And so going forward, I'm going to do my best to request income and expense info from these wind facilities so that I can take the income approach into effect because obviously, they all have different purchase power agreements. So yeah, they're all selling the same kind of power, but geez, they're selling it at a different value per kilowatt. There are also, you know, there's also talks with these new solar farms, you know? They're getting it and they're sort of putting their elbows in their ribs, per se, and they're joining in also, which might drive down the price of this power that they're selling. So this is something that we all sort of need to keep in mind. And I apologize for a lack of communication on our end of this. And I feel as though going forward, I definitely don't have a problem with keeping an open line of communication with you folks, especially if we were to see any alarming adjustments. Obviously, we were a little bit blindsided by, in this particular situation. But at the same time, if we were to come up with any sort of changes in our valuation model that caused anything significant, then at least we can let you know if you, you know, or should expect to see a large increase or decrease or whatever in your TIF payment.
Okay, I'd like to understand that question though, Millard. In the answer, was he asking you if there would be a consistent decrease in the value because of depreciation on the equipment over the, in the future years? Is that the question, Millard?
Well, yeah, well, normally, personal property would depreciate 5% per year until it bottoms out at 30%. But if this is the difference in this capacity factor, is that going to increase that so that the depreciation rate will be like 7% per year or 8% per year?
Sure, as I mentioned earlier, there's no accelerated depreciation. It's treated more as like an obsolescence that would be applied to the older wind farms. And if we were to change to, say, an income approach, then that capacity would be taken into consideration when you look at what they generate. And obviously, the more they generate, the more income they should be reporting. So that will sort of also would help to level the playing field as far as the wind farms that are more profitable than others. So that is all, and...
And once you apply this obsolescence factor, that's going to stay the same? Stay flat at whatever percent you observe?
Yes.
Yep. Thank you.
So the short answer is, is that we can expect a decrease over the life of the TIF agreement based upon depreciation and other factors, Millard? Justin?
Using a cost approach, yes. You would generally see yearly depreciation. Obviously, it does bottom out at a certain percentage. It doesn't depreciate to zero. It sort of depreciates to a bottom line, and then it would sort of, it would stay there until they either replace the equipment or if it becomes completely inoperable, then we may choose to then make a further adjustment. But basically, as long as the turbines are spinning and producing power, it's going to go down to a certain level and stop.
Unless, of course, they make an upgrade in the technology, you know...
Correct, then they would report those costs to us the year that it was done. And then we would add the value of those improvements and then start depreciating those. If we go to an income approach, then it would sort of, it would fluctuate a little bit more depending on exactly how much they're producing and what their, you know, what their income is yearly. So if it was that much more of a consistent income stream, then it might be that much more of a consistent valuation. And then obviously, the depreciation is built into the cap rate that that's used for the income approach.
Well, I can tell you that. I don't want to get into this discussion on whether they're licensed for output or their equipment is maxing out. We've been through that before, but Millard, did you have a second question?
Yes, it has to do with the reimbursement. We're supposed to reimburse the state $17,342.80. But I think I understood that Bull Hill Wind was going to reimburse the county $40,466.54, and then we would reimburse the state the full $57,809.34. Am I on the right page there?
Hey, Millard. The other, the other counties, that's how they're approaching this, is that they're going to wait for the reimbursement from the developer. I would suggest that maybe you contact the developer?
Yep.
Sorry, Lisa, they contacted us yesterday afternoon, Millard. I guess you're more, a little more up on it than I suspected, but that threw another curve ball until I finally figured out that I'm just going to figure this, doing this backwards as opposed to them paying you, then you paying us, and we give them a portion back. It's going to work in reverse, so...
But why is that, Lisa? I think, don't they, they usually pay you. You send it to us and then we reimburse. Is that how it goes?
Yep.
Yes, generally, that's how it works.
But we're doing something different to make up for, for an assessment that they're going to get a rebate on?
They overpaid us and you overpaid them, so we're doing it in reverse, yes. We're refunding them, and then eventually, we will, we will get our $57,000.
Right, they received a check. I got a call from them yesterday afternoon, late yesterday afternoon. They received a check, which really threw a monkey wrench in Millard after our conversation. But then as I start to think about it, it kind of all makes sense as you figure out where everybody's supposed to end up. So I think it's a paper trail, probably, Lisa, is the best way to describe it.
Yes.
So, yeah, think of it in reverse. So they paid the state, reimbursed the developer, who's going to reimburse us the 80 instead of 30 because they should be keeping the 30. And then we send the full, we take that $40,000 with the 17 we would have sent to the developer back to the state.
And who's on second, who's on third?
Yeah, so the question that arises out of this is, we're all sharing in this loss of revenue equitably. Is that a true statement?
No, and I'll tell you why. The state doesn't get any revenue. So they lost nothing. You can't lose anything if you're not getting anything.
Right, they're more of a pass-through, right?
That's true, okay.
They're just a pass-through. We are the ones that lost in a TIF agreement and the, of course, the wind farm gained in having to reduce the taxation.
The wind sends on the dollar.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's kind of odd that an entity who's not involved is making this decision almost on our behalf because it's affecting our income.
That's a good question, Justin, because is the process for getting an adjustment to your valuation similar with the UTs with main revenue as it is with towns and their property owners? In other words, is that, is that abatement system the same?
It is actually. So in most, you know, assessor agent, so if, say, a small town hires an agent, the selectmen assessors are technically the assessors and they make the decisions. But if it's a, if it's an elected assessor, they then have all the control. So they don't necessarily have to go through the town manager to grant abatements or supplements. They basically, it's their job to control this, and they're the expert and they make the decisions. So in the case of the state of Maine, we act as the tax assessor. Strangely enough, we also act as the tax collector, which the assessor and the collector can't be the same person in municipality. But with the state, we assess the tax, we collect the tax, and then we disperse the tax. So no, you don't want us calling you every time we get an abatement application anyways. Although in this case, I mean, obviously, it was substantial. But as far as legalities behind it, we're able to make those decisions on our own.
Well, of course, in any other situation, it doesn't affect that bottom line. This does because of a TIF agreement. And I'm not sure if we would have offered comments with regards to how you should have handled it, but I think Paul is right. I mean, I'd like to have known before the fact instead of after that there's going to be a downward adjustment to a TIF reimbursement.
I think Justin hit on it earlier. Sorry, Paul, if I could just for a quick second. I think Justin hit on it earlier, and if I could really emphasize that point, which is, Justin, the communication, I can really speak for not just our Commissioners, but all Commissioners across the state that have UTs, is that it would really be beneficial if there was better communication between the, between the two groups, between the state and the counties with regards to especially any major, any type of adjustment when it comes to the wind farms. That's just, that's the general, that's just the general overview of my experience of this issue.
Yeah, because it's in the middle of our budgeting cycle. You know, it's at the, it's at the, excuse me, not a budgeting cycle, but it's, it's after our budgeting cycle. It's in the middle of the year.
What... They... Are they compelled to provide you income data? I don't think so, right? That's just out of the kindness of their own hearts?
No, we actually can do a formal request. Obviously, there's confidentiality agreements involved in that as part of 706A request. But, but yeah, we can, we can formally request the information and hope that, in hopes that not only do we get provided the information, we get provided good information, you know? But obviously, when you're getting it from many a different event entities, you sort of can compare everybody and get an idea as to if it appears to be, be good information.
Well, from the scenario that you outlined, you know, with the obsolescence of equipment and the updated equipment, and I don't see either one as a win. You know, the, you know, if their, their equipment is becoming obsolete more quickly, that means they're, you know, they're depreciating their equipment faster or, or, you know, more dollars per year, but faster. So that eventually, if, I mean, I don't see a win for the county here in either case.
Right, I mean, you know, unfortunately, we're just tasked with trying to place a fair value on the property. And we, unfortunately, we don't really, we can't pay attention to what the revenue is going to be. It's just, this is your valuation, and it goes into the tax base and it computes into an amount of revenue that they owe to help pay for these services. And again, I understand that it's a loss from your TIF account and that obviously you guys have plans in place in how you want to spend this money for economic development. But please keep in mind that this abatement did not cause you to not be able to, at least I hope, provide services to the UT resident because that actually comes from the revenue that they pay, you know? So I feel as though that is really important to keep in mind. I mean, I'm definitely, I am the one to blame for this misjudgment in valuation, but I'm also thankful that the folks in the UT aren't suffering due to my mistake. Unfortunately, you guys have to do a little bit of suffering through this. But hopefully, given the fact that the monies, even after the adjustment, I feel as though the revenue that goes into the TIF account is very similar to what went in your TIF account the prior year. So there was some consistency from that aspect.
Okay, Justin, did you and Lisa have a commitment at nine this morning?
We do, yes.
Okay, because John, I wanted to give John Wambacher an opportunity to ask or comment if he had one. John?
The only thing I wanted to ask, Justin, was so how, how often are we going to see like the next reevaluation? Like, I'm not sure, I don't know if I understand exactly how often you're reevaluating them.
Sure. Generally, our revaluations take place on an as-need basis. And so we sort of monitor what properties are selling for as opposed to the assessments. We are going to take the stance of making small adjustments more frequently as opposed to large adjustments with much many years in between these adjustments. But the wind farms are very unique in the fact that we, we actually adjust them on a yearly basis. If you were to look, you know, they're adjusted yearly... If you were to look, you know, uh, they're adjusted yearly as opposed to more of a residential type home isn't adjusted, but it's sort of a smaller value and we have a better control of the market value of a, of a residential home over, over a wind farm, that's for sure, but we address those yearly, so, um, you would just basically see some basic yearly depreciation if you continue with a cost approach. And then if it's, uh, if we were to switch to an income approach, um, I'll reach out to you folks to sort of give you an idea as to what that change is in comparison to a cost approach, and then on a yearly basis, it really shouldn't, I'm not going to say it won't fluctuate a lot, but it would, if the price of energy goes down or they're having a hard time not, you know, producing energy, then obviously the value's going to go down, but if the wind's blowing strong and the energy prices are up, then then you guys are going to see, you know, an increase in their.
So, so right now, you don't necessarily have a timeframe plan for starting to look at it through, for the, uh, revenue approach?
No, uh, income approach, I'm, I'm going to, um, yeah, that's fine, no, uh, income approach, uh, we're going to be requesting that information very shortly for this upcoming commitment, and so it, that is something that I will be, uh, I'll be looking over, uh, early summer, late spring, depending on exactly when I get the information from them, and, uh, and then make a decision before commitment, which typically happens the first week of August, I believe, or the end of July, right in that general vicinity.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, anything further? Lisa, Justin, thank you very much for coming, it's very informative, we appreciate you taking the time and updating us on the situation. And we look forward, Justin, Lisa, to hearing from you perhaps more often in the future, okay?
Sure, thank you for taking the time to listen to us.
Thank you.
You too.
Good day now.
Bye.
Gentlemen, I'm going to now direct your attention to, I am scheduled at nine o'clock. There's been a request by two ATV clubs in Hancock County to ask us to manage uh, a state-approved trail maintenance grant that is offered by the Bureau of Parks and Lands. We're joined this morning by Brian Bronson Supervisor, who are the ATV programs. Good morning, Brian, see your name. Are you with us? There he is.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Good morning, Brian.
Morning. Can you hear me?
Yes. Can you hear him okay?
Yep.
How are you all?
Good, Brian, why don't you, uh, why don't you kind of give us a little quick history on this program? I understand it's been in place for several years, and other counties take advantage of it. And would, so would you give us a little background on, on that, please?
Sure, so, uh, the ATV program, the clubs have a, a club grant program that they're able to apply for. Uh, but there's also what we call a municipal grant program, which clubs can work with a town or a county to, um, apply for funding from us that would, instead of going directly to the club, it comes through the municipality or the, of the county in this case. And the advantage to the municipal grant is they, you know, we can, we can provide bigger grants. Uh, the disadvantage is there's a match, uh, that the clubs have to make. So, um, but what we have been working on recently is, um, changing the rules so that that match will be less, it'll only be ten percent, uh, instead of thirty percent. But what's happening is with some of these bigger landowners, they're, they're now asking us to help maintain their roads better and do things that are just going to cost more than, uh, eight, nine thousand dollar club grants that clubs can get, can cover. And so, in this case, most of these are in unorganized territory, so, you know, trying to get the city of Ellsworth that's once, or it, when it's not in Ellsworth, it's in all these other areas, it makes more sense to go with the county. We do that with Somerset County, Piscataquis County, we've done it with Franklin, Arustic. Um, and basically, it becomes a scenario where the clubs, you know, multiple projects together. We have one signed agreement, uh, between us and the county, so the money, the grants approved to the county, the money goes from the state to the county at a reimbursement level. And then you would have agreements with those individual clubs so that you would just, you know, basically pass through the money minus your admin costs for actually doing the paperwork, uh, to the individual clubs, uh, on the specific reimbursement. We typically try to do that on a like, no more than once a month basis. But I encourage them to try to do it on a, on a monthly basis, just to keep cash flow moving. So it allows the, you know, us to be able to provide fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollar grants instead of eight, nine thousand dollar grants, which will allow us in theory to be able to do the work the landowners are asking for in order to keep the trail system open.
Brian, is there a, is there a time limit on the, uh, full extent?
Yeah, so the, the application has to be signed, completed, and into me at the deadline of the end of May, sooner is obviously better. Um, and the reimbursement covers work done from, you know, uh, basically trail opening or first part of April through the end of November. So the last reimbursement will need to come in by the end of November.
Okay, Brian, I sent, uh, I sent the commissioners and Millard a copy of that agreement that was provided to us from Somerset County. Uh, I understand there'll be some, a few minor changes with regards to the new one, especially in the amount of reimbursement. That really is inconsequential to us if the matter of passing along whatever funds they do. But Millard, one thing that you and I haven't had an opportunity to talk about is, I, I noticed in Somerset County and talking with Don, the county administrator, their UT director administers and manages this grant. And she says, uh, he is really the go-to guy for, uh, dealing with this grant and the clubs and whatnot. And I'm just wondering, first, are you willing, are you able? Can you help us with managing this? We're talking about the airline club, we're talking about a Cane year club.
Correct. Yeah.
Yes, I'm, I'm willing and able, but I have questions.
Understood.
Go for it, Brian.
I'm look, I'm looking at the Somerset Grant, and it's talking about fifty-two thousand nine hundred and a seventy percent match. But then in another place, it's talking about thirty-two thousand nine hundred, and then down below, it says approved total grant twenty-three thousand thirty dollars at, at seventy percent. And I, I can't make these numbers match anything. Fifty-two thousand nine hundred at seventy percent would be thirty-seven thousand thirty dollars.
Right. So what happens is this, the, the clubs reached out to Dave and they put in their request. And that was that fifty-two thousand, um, the, the reality was, what I had available for funding did not allow me to approve that whole level, so I approved the thirty-two nine at that time in order to be able to, because what we, what I generally try to do is make sure everybody's got something based on the amount of money available. And then if we get more money, we can go back and revisit it later in the year, but so the approved amount was, uh, the project was thirty-two nine and seventy percent of that.
Yep, I got it.
Where the twenty-three thousand thirty came. And what we're trying, well, we're in the process of doing, um, the deadline for comments was last week, so we're now, we're going through the finalized process of the APA. But we're trying to change that so that the reimbursement will only be, will be at ninety percent of the approved amount, not seventy percent, because what's happening is clubs are finding it very hard to come up with that kind of match. And, uh, because they don't get local money back from the towns, uh, we're trying to give them a higher reimbursement rate uh, on the ATV side than we do typically on the Somerville side. Um, so that's how those numbers work. So what'll happen is, let's say airline and Acadia reach out to you with a, you know, with requests. You combine those, we put it on the grant application, we set it in, if, if for some reason, because I hear from a landowner or somebody that they don't approve part of it, I would reduce it because of that, or if we just don't have enough eligible money, then I would talk with them and you and say, alright, we're not going to be able to fund the full amount, this is what I can do. We would change the project amount and approve that amount and then approve the grant at, at like ninety percent of that amount. But I will tell you that typical years, what happens is some of these people, you know, have bigger eyes than they do stomachs, if you will, and some grant applicants don't end up spending everything that they thought they were going to. And so what we tend to do later in the year, you know, in August or whatever, we start to get a better feel for that, I sometimes amend grants and bring people back up to their original project amount and remove the money from somebody else that I had approved that isn't going to be able to spend it. So we have the ability to go back and revisit.
So, you, you go ahead, Millard, I'm sorry, yep.
And then I, in this contract, I have questions about, uh, sections G and F. The section G says the municipality, which in this case would be the county, is responsible for, uh, acquire the interest in the land, establish the trail and open and use it, and then further on in, uh, back in F, it says, the municipality shall operate and maintain the trails and facilities.
Right.
Um, and that. Looking, looking at G, it looks like the trailer is going to be owned by the county or the municipality?
It isn't.
That's specific to that one?
Correct, I mean, that is how that language is, and honestly, that's another, another plan we have moving forward to try to revise this agreement because that language really is outdated. Um, what amounts to is the clubs get landowner permission licenses and or ownership, but mostly it's just licenses for the use of the land for the trail. In some cases, we actually have the licenses here at the state. So what clubs are doing and counties are doing is they're just having an MOU between them that stipulates that the, any requirement for the landowner permission and the main maintenance of the trail and the facilities is actually on the club, not the county. That way, it takes the burden off of you, that's what the county, uh, the club's expecting to do anyway, and that's what they are doing, this just gives them an ability to do it at a higher level of funding.
Well, Brian, didn't you tell me before that the, uh, the state doesn't pay under this grant for the purchase of property?
We can legally, but we haven't been doing that because we just don't have the money. I mean, right now, we're struggling to get enough money to maintain the landowner permitted trails. So if we were to turn around and start buying trails, we would be even worse off. Furthermore, most of these landlords don't want to sell the trails or even easement for the trails. They tend to be afraid that they're going to end up with another appellation trail scenario, and then it'll impact their ability to harvest wood or whatever. So generally, we have three-year agreements with these landowners. And we, we have that agreement here with the landowner that we provide the insurance. It lists the clubs and the clubs maintain their specific trail, like when AFM skates down there, most of this land that we're talking about is actually on AFM ground. Um, but they, we have a total of, I think, twenty-one clubs on AFM. Each of them all over the state maintains their portion. So again, just some kind of language between you and them to make sure everybody's clear on that is what we recommend to do, and that's, that's what's been happening.
Okay, so gentlemen, if the, uh, you were furnished with a copy of Somerset's agreement, one of the first duties Millard would have is to sit down and develop a memorandum of understanding with the two ATV clubs, taking the responsibility for everything in this agreement that it sets the municipality has, which would have been us, transferring that responsibility to the ATV clubs, and they would agree to take that responsibility and relieve us of that. So I think it's safe to say, Brian, that if we approve this, managing this, we would simply act as the, uh, Millard would do the managing, but the county basically would simply be doing the finances as far as the pass through, is that correct?
Correct, I mean, if you talk to Dave Spencer, that is what goes on, we, uh, it's all on a reimbursement, so the grants approved, everybody gets the letters and notification, and then as costs are incurred and money is spent, the bills are forwarded to us, we reimburse the money to you and you reimburse it to the local club. So it's our, it's coming straight from the ATV program to you, to the club, and then paying contractors and whatever.
So once we do the initial work of this MOU, it's, and we file the application, the agreement gets, uh, prepared and, and affected. Basically, it's just a matter of Millard managing the bills as they come in, sending them along for reimbursement, correct?
Yeah, there's a, right, there's a municipal reimbursement form, and you would just submit that, you know, monthly or when, you know, depending on when you get bills. That check would go back to the, to the county, and then depending on what you have for a process there, whether he has to get approval for a check to be cut, or whether you get that all upfront. I've seen some counties and towns where they, they get this all approved upfront and it just, it's a process that just occurs all year. Other cases, the board looks at each one of the reimbursements when the check comes back and authorizes that check to be sent to the appropriate club. But either way, that's, that's the process, there'll be this grant application paperwork and then on the monthly basis or whatever, the reimbursement, which is a one-page, two-sided form, that would just have the amounts and you attach copies of the bills, receipts or whatever, submit that to us. We process it, the check comes, either a check comes or a direct deposit, depending on how the county is set up with the state.
So.
I have a couple of questions.
Wait a minute, John, go ahead, I'm going to ask, let you give John an opportunity.
So I just wanted to make sure is, whose responsibility in the end is it when the bills come in to make sure that it's all appropriately, you know, like that it's an appropriate project? That, you know, like is Miller going to have to go drive out and look at these trails and make sure the work was done?
No, we, I have staff who's actually doing that. Um, Bailey Grant, I think you guys know retired game warden recently, he took Charlie Corliss's place, he works for us down east. So Bailey will be doing the inspections on us. You know, so when the work's done, Bailey will inspect it, they're going to submit a bill to you, and we're going to pay it if the work passes the muster.
Thank you.
Sure, so I wouldn't authorize any payment that wasn't signed by Bailey Grant.
No, Bailey won't be signing it, but when, if there's an issue, Bailey will be in touch with us, and then I would say, alright guys, wait a minute, what are we paying for here? Because the paperwork, Bailey won't have the authority obviously to sign that paperwork, but we will have Bailey looking at all of it because our agreement with the landowners is that we will do those inspections, so they don't have to, so you don't have to.
So, so.
So we're just passing paperwork back and forth with no idea whether work was done or not?
Well, I, we will, when you send it to me, I'm going to verify that that work's done. Um, and in theory, it'll be verified before you get it, but it'll be definitely verified before we pay it.
So I think what it means, Millard, is that you don't have to worry about it. In other words, every bill that comes to you, you just send it down to, down to Brian.
Right.
It's Brian's responsibility to decide whether or not that's, uh, that's, the work has been done and it should be paid, so I think every.
How does the reimbursement come in? I've worked with some of these state grants where the municipalities had to pay for everything upfront and then get reimbursed for the state on the tail end.
Right, no, that's not, that's not how this is working. First off, it, like I said, it's a pass through to you, and what we're encouraging them to do is not to do that. It's much easier, you know, if you run a business with regular cash flow, things go better, and so that's what I'm telling them is, as these projects get accomplished on a monthly basis, let's keep the money turning around, rather than build up, you know, fifty, sixty thousand dollars worth of bills, we turning them in a few thousand at a time as, you know, as a road is graded or as a bridge is built or whatever it is. So we keep that money flowing, that way the club can pay the bills, you reimburse them after I reimburse you and, and everybody's, you know, you haven't used any of your money, and they haven't run out of money and had to go. You haven't used any of your money and they haven't run out of money and had to go borrow money.
Right, that would also validate the bill, the authorization for it. No, you wouldn't pay anything until you receive the money from Brian.
Right, that's what covers you. I mean, because we ultimately, we're the ones that are going to get audited if there's. And checked if there is stuff isn't done correctly and we, we can, you know, that's been done. It's kind of a regular process. We look through all of that.
Is there a predetermined administrative fee that's already been established?
There is not. Per se, what we generally say is that if, if a county, you know, whatever you're paying the individual doing it. And the amount of hours involved, that cost, you can show that cost, that's a legitimate cost and that makes it a legitimate cost. And obviously, if you turned in, you know, five thousand dollars worth of admin costs, we might be going, well, where's that? But it's pretty normal on projects like this for a county to get, you know. A few hundred bucks, thousand bucks, eleven hundred bucks a year to cover the cost of the paperwork and, and. You know, commissioners' time and whatever to vote on these things.
Now, I assume that all these MOUs and you have templates, so Miller's not having to reinvent the wheel and it's not an undue burden on him?
Yes, we can do that. And again, I, what I had said before, and again, it's up to you, but you may or may not want to reach out. You know, to the counties. I can't give detailed information on what each county does with somebody or each town does with somebody without their. Permission, but we can chase that down if, if we need to. They might be more willing to share it with you than giving me permission.
Have any of these been done in Penobscot or Washington County?
They have not. We actually are having similar meetings with Washington County to try to do the same thing. We've never done them before. But with the pushback that we've been getting with the landowners since the governor's task force there in two thousand nineteen. The big issue is how do we get more money on the ground for these clubs? And so that's why we're looking at it. But they've been done with Arustic County, Somerset County, Stattercris County, Franklin County. I think we've done it. And I'm sure if we've done one with Kennebec or not. Trying to think. I'm not sure we've ever done one with Penobscot. But I could be wrong.
Brian.
Done one recently though.
Any administrative fee that we assess, does that come off the seventy percent or the ninety percent that the club gets? Are we reducing their amount?
Well, in theory. Well, yes and no. I mean, here's the deal. Let's say the club submitted a bill for ten thousand dollars worth of work. And you added a five hundred dollar, you know, admin cost to that, let's just say. Then that's going to be ten thousand five hundred bucks. We're going to reimburse ninety percent of that. So we're going to reimburse, what, nine thousand four hundred and fifty bucks? So that then is what, either you take your five hundred out of that and give the rest to the club or you subtract. Via ninety, you know, and maybe you only take four fifty of the five hundred again, depending on whatever agreement you have with them. And then the rest goes there. So that reimbursement is going to apply all the way across. One of the things that they can do, and of course you could if you so desired, is they can provide in kind match, you know. Clubs, people out there putting up signs, doing brushing work, all of that stuff. They can include those with those bills and that typically will exceed their necessary match. So they'll actually be fine anyway because they've got, you know, any of that donated club membership time is counted at fifteen dollars an hour. For trail work. And so they may be out there with a crew on a Saturday or a couple of, you know, on the weekend. Brushing out five miles of road in order for the grader to be able to get in there. Well, they can include those hours of those people as long as they have worksheets documenting them. So typically, that covers their match and, and then some at ninety percent. The struggle has been at seventy percent. They've been hard, hard pressed to make it up, but.
But the short answer is, is that any administrative fee we assess is going to be less money they have to spend on the roads, correct?
Well, yes, unless, I mean, again, build it into your application. So hopefully we build it into the application. So it doesn't, it's already planned for. And if it's planned for, then it really doesn't hurt anybody.
Okay, this seems pretty straightforward to me. Is that this, this, Mr. Chair is just information at this point? Doesn't need action?
I'm sorry, but I really think we need action today because we have to file an, you know, we have to file an application. Clubs have to get quotes or they have to get an estimate of the cost. And so we really need to make a decision today if we want to manage this. So that we can start the process and they can, Brian can get his paperwork done by May and so on. So. I'd like to, I'd like to have you come to a point where you feel confident that you know all there is about it and then we can make a decision.
Well.
Just a minute, Millard?
Yeah, I would think that the commissioners need to say, yes, we think this is a good idea and we'll move forward. But then take each application or each case on an individual basis.
Yeah, that, that, that's sort of where I was going because, I mean, I am supportive of this idea. I. And, you know, I guess I could make a motion that, that, you know, we support the idea and, and, you know, request that Miller come back to us with documents. As they become available. Is that the kind of action you're looking for or do we just agree to support it or?
Brian, what does, what is, what assurance do you need that the county is going to follow through with this?
Well, I, I mean, again. I think the basically the concept here is that if you're supportive of it and supportive of Miller doing it. Whether you make a motion and a vote on that to document it so that it covers Miller or not, that's, I guess, between you guys, but. What, if you're supportive, then what I will do is make sure that the. There's at least a contact from each club that's in touch with Miller, get them to get their project descriptions together. We get the application filled out. And, I mean, I don't know. You guys would have to talk to them, but in theory, your next meeting is what, two weeks out?
Yes.
And then the next one would be early May?
Be the first Tuesday in May.
So, I mean, in theory, they would, if, if you guys are in favor of this, then we would tell those clubs that they get to get all that data together, the application. Filled out. And so Miller can sign it and whoever else needs to. By at least that first meeting in May, that way you guys could look at that and vote to agree to, you know. Finalize the support of it and submit it. I think that would work.
Paul, I think, I think the motion would be that, that we vote to, we vote to. Endorse this program with Millard managing, doing the direct management. With the idea we'll wait for action on the application, Brian? We have to prove that application?
Well, I mean, the application has to be signed. So the, as a group, you will need to authorize, in theory, Miller to be the project. Manager of that, project director for that application and then he can sign it. Or, you know, if you made somebody else, somebody else can sign it. And then, because you will need to have. We will need something in writing that makes it clear that he has authority to manage this when the application comes in.
Okay, okay. How's this? Move to support, because I think it's, it's important to memorialize it at this point, you know, the more that I listen. So how about, I move to support the concept as outlined by Brian Bronson and authorize UT Director Miller Billings to move forward. And, and return to the commission as needed to move the project forward. Is that?
That works for me.
That's wordy, but.
I want to insert the, in the, the indication that this is the municipal grant and aid program. Plug that in there.
The municipal.
Aid in aid program.
Aid and.
Grant and aid.
Grant and aid.
Grant and aid.
Municipal Grant in Aid Program. So that we sure understand what we're talking about.
Okay, so instead of the concept, municipal aid and grant and aid as outlined by Brian, should I say that?
Municipal, Paul, Municipal Grant in Aid.
Right.
Municipal Grant in Aid.
Right, program, right. So give us your motion again, Brian.
Or Paul.
Paul.
Move to support the municipal grant and aid program is outlined by Brian Bronson and authorize UT Director Miller Billings to move forward. With this project and return to the commission as needed in support.
Seconded. Okay, it's been moved and seconded and to me, Millard, that sounds like you'll come to us when you have your application in hand. We'll authorize you to sign that and submit it, correct? Okay. Gentlemen, anything further with your guys to this? I think we'll have a discussion later on administrative fees and. Millard, would this qualify for the county assisting the ATV clubs with that TIF monies for that ten percent?
Any of it that's in the UT and not in a municipality, we could use TIF money.
Okay. Well, we're, we're going to have a subsequent discussion, gentlemen, on, on how much aid, how much assistance we want to give the club, if any. With regards to their municipal, their maintenance fee and the.
Well, and we've got equipment if it's on a trail that's suitable to use that equipment on to.
They will, they will provide, or I will, if they, whatever needs my help too, but. A map that'll show where all of this work will be done and where it is. Most all of it, I believe, is actually in unorganized territory. But we are, Bailey is going to be meeting with the AFM foresters and contractors as soon as the ground, you know, gets. Hard enough so we can go in there and, and start putting together project descriptions and, and cost estimates. So we'll have a, we should hopefully in the next two or three weeks have a much better handle on exactly how much money we're talking about and. And where the work will be done. But I'm guessing that each one of these clubs is going to be looking at somewhere between twenty five and thirty thousand dollars in projects. So the total grant would be between fifty, sixty thousand dollars in projects and the grant would be ninety percent of that. Once we get that together, we'll know better.
And, and what I like about this concept is, you know, through what Brian has outlined, you know, in kind. Work and that, you know, there's skin in the game for them here. So the onus is on them, you know, to make this work. We're, we're basically an enabling entity here with. We may not even need, you know, financial, they may not even need financial support from us depending on what the scenario is. So. That's why I support this program. There's skin in the game here for everyone.
Right.
Gentlemen, we're ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor of the motion on the floor? Commissioner Warren Becker?
Yes.
Which is the parody?
Yes.
I am myself. Millard, Brian, anything additional before we move on?
I think I'm good. Millard, do you want my cell number or anything?
Cell number, please.
Five nine two, five three seven seven.
Thank you.
That's the best way to get me. The office number is two eight seven, four nine five eight, but frankly, we're not in here all the time with this whole COVID stuff, so. The best way to reach me is myself.
And thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
You.
Have a great day.
Just by way of history and whatnot that you're probably not aware of, Bailey Grant, who is a retired game warden, is now the supervisor for the Sunrise Trail and works for the park. Used to be a deputy sheriff for us and whatnot. Good guy, good guy to work with. I've worked with him. A few times since he's taken over and he's a good replacement for, for Charlie.
Just on the, so you know, Bill, Bailey is actively awaiting the birth of his first grandchild.
Oh, good for him.
Daughter is in labor as we speak.
Oh, good for him. Yep. All right, very good. Brian, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, let's move on. We have with us this morning Aaron Doherty. And if you will. Recall, and I've asked Rebecca to send to you this morning. The minutes of a meeting of. February fifth, I think it was, of two thousand nineteen. When Aaron came before us to talk about the trail out behind the library and down behind the courthouse complex. And Aaron is back again this morning to discuss this further. So Aaron, I'll give you the floor. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having me. I appreciate the opportunity and I, I promise you, it's not going to be two years again before I come back. So that's my short way of saying I'm sorry for, for letting so much time elapse. We've had a lot of turnover, you know, in the city and a variety of other projects that have cropped up at FPC. I would really like to take this one and, and carry it through and, and get it finished at this point. And so what I'm talking about specifically here. Is the Riverwalk project between Main Street and the dam. On the, on the Union River, which is a beautiful natural asset. I think we all agree. You know, briefly, there's been public surveying done, public opinion survey back in two thousand fifteen as part of a. City visioning project and by and large, people very strongly said. That they wanted to see more opportunities to connect with, with water in Ellsworth. Ellsworth has a lot of water and we've got. You know, the river flowing right through the city. And I think that people felt. That we should capitalize on this natural asset because it's good for our community. I think it's good for the county as well. So you probably don't need me to make the case for the Riverwalk. It's, you know, one of those. Mom and apple pie kind of things. I think everybody loves the water and the opportunity to view it. But the real question is, what do we do about this? So there's an opportunity before us to. Secure trail easements of the, from the landowners who have parcels that go right down to the Union River. And that includes the county and it includes the city and it includes Brookfield, just those three landowners, which. From a, you know, a land deal perspective, this is fairly simple compared to some of the others that Frenchman Bay Conservancy has done. Where, you know, there were multiple landowners. In this case. You know, it's, it is publicly, publicly owned. It's public land. It, there's an existing trail. And what we're proposing is to, like I said, place a public access easement on it. And the easement would simply say that in perpetuity, there's going to be a trail here. There's going to be at least an opportunity for a trail here. And the public can come down and, and walk that stretch between the library and the dam. That's the first piece. The second piece is that I am asking for some money, some investment in this natural asset of ours. So that we can restore the tread of the river, the trail, or sorry, the tread of the trail. It has faced erosion. There's a lot of plants growing up in, around it that need to be cleared out. So we need to do some trail work and we also need to improve the trail with some stone steps up and around the ledge that's on the. The downhill side behind the county courthouse and the jail there. And then, and then kind of clean up some sections as well. If any of you have been back there. You will have seen that there's some trash back there. It's just kind of the little forgotten place in the city. There's a homeless encampment or evidence of a homeless encampment from the past up by the dam. You know, I think we'd all benefit from kind of getting that cleaned up a little bit. Obviously, people need a place to stay, but there's a shelter nearby and. That's what that's for. So we'd like to make this, take this from a place that people want to avoid. And turn it back into something that, you know, people hopefully would go out and have a picnic or walk on their lunch break. And in the long run, what we would like to do is to continue the trail from behind the library. All the way up to Central Street. So you can make a loop of it and come back down State Street. So. I will stop there and then answer any questions you have because I did share some information with you. Thanks again for taking the time to have me here today. Thanks for taking the time to read it and I'm happy to answer any questions and go into as much details you'd like.
I just had a question, Scott. What do you think? What's? What on our end, on the county? What are the pitfalls or what concerns do we have about allowing the easement?
Uh, well, I think you always run the risk. Kind of take care of that would be, I guess, if you wanted to have a lawyer involved. Kind of take care of that would be, I guess, if you wanted to have a lawyer involved to review it, but I, yeah, I don't think, you know, the more, the more people that walk the trail down there, sure, there's a risk to everything. Better to the trailer, it would be, would be appropriate though.
I could speak to that also. One element of risk that people often ask about is liability. Well, you know, what if somebody goes down there and gets hurt? Thing. Main law is actually very supportive of the landowner, thankfully. That's one of the benefits that we have here. And, and so that's not a real, that's not a real risk unless you're asking people to do something that's unsafe and you're sponsoring an event that would jeopardize people's health. If you just have a trail and people walk on it, somebody falls and breaks their leg or something, of course, anybody can sue anybody, but you're not going to be liable in that situation.
You know, John, I will tell you something, though, that equates to this. And it's giving, a landowner giving permission for a snowmobile and/or an ATV trail. Because once you designate that, it gets used appropriately. If you refuse it and people still continue to use it, it gets used inappropriately. And so the fact that there is a, you know, an encampment up there probably wouldn't happen if this was a recognized trail that was used often by responsible people. They'd report that, it would be taken care of immediately. And so I really think that opening this up and making this a designated trail and maintaining this would really, for the landowner, I think, would, would actually be, put us in a better shape. I do have two issues. And the first one is I'm not sure if we could turn the clock back 30 years, 40 years, however long it was, that we would have given the Hancock County, the Ellsworth Historical Society, a deed to the old jail. I think the hindsight, perhaps that, that just wouldn't have happened if we'd known where we were going to be today and the issue there. And I say that because once we give this easement, it is a deeded easement for which we have to honor, you know, for basically forever until that easement is either returned or we somehow get it back if we want it. And so it's a decision that we're stuck with. But unlike the old jail, which is on a very valuable piece of county campus, this trail is not. I, I don't see a downside of giving that up forever because there's no way we could ever develop it for our own use. Now, the only other thing is, is that, and I'm glad the sheriff is with us, is that, of course, that's going to increase the amount of public activity behind the jail. And of course, one of the, the areas behind the jail is the outside recreation area. And Scott Kane, do you, you see any, any issues? And before I, before you answer that, I would say that I would rather see, you know, this responsible public using a nice maintained trail rather than a trail that's, it's not being maintained, used by, you know, by homeless people or others. So do you see a downside, though, in promoting traffic on the river down behind that jail?
Well, I guess realistically, it's just how are you going to monitor it? I mean, are you going to have cameras to keep an eye on it? Because we have had situations where, where items have been dropped off. And this was prior to COVID. And when we had trustees outside, they, they would pick it up and sometimes it would work its way into the jail. I mean, I agree, it's a, it's a nice piece of property and it would be a nice addition to the city. But as far as security for the jail, I'd be concerned on how it was going to be monitored and those types of things. We've had situations where people have, have gone down behind the jail and inmates were able to see them and they were in some way, shape or form, able to communicate certain things. So those things would concern me, but I think those would be way down on the list of concerns as long as it was, you know, monitored in some way, shape or form and patrolled, for lack of a better word, just to, just to keep an eye on it from time to time.
I was, I was in your office here in the last couple of weeks and I was impressed with the quality of your cameras outside and what they're able to record and see and whatnot. And so we certainly would support any effort you made to increase, you know, your, your visibility on the back area up here if we did approve this. Gentlemen, your thoughts?
I, I support the, you know, the easement portion of it. I'm, I'm leery of the financing portion of it. It, it seems almost like a, like a city project or an entity project more than a county project to me. So I don't know if you could touch on that, Aaron. But, you know, I, I do, I'm somewhat familiar with the area. I think it would be a nice addition. But I'm not sure that, you know, I'm just not sure it's a county project. I, I don't have a, a problem with the county enabling it to happen on its property. But, you know, funding is, you know, another story for me.
John?
Well, the thing that obviously I came up with when I was looking at this is, you're right. Like, I don't want to go in and approve the financial part of it. Because to me, this is something that should be part of a grant when we do, you know, an application for a grant. If we were to choose to do a community benefits grant this year, it's a perfect fit for that kind of a grant, in my opinion. But, yeah, I don't, I'm not, not, anything against the Conservancy, okay? So, yeah, my personal support of it, to be honest. But I just don't want every entity coming up to the, kind of, to the meetings asking for individual grants like this. To me, it has to be part of a program, not, like I said, nothing to, to dissuade the Conservancy or put it in a bad light. It's just, I think that's how it really needs to get done.
And Aaron, I'll tell you, that's, that's been our policy since we've had this community benefits account, is that we don't want to honor individual requests because it almost is forcing us to pick and choose one at a time. We'd rather make a sum of money available, let everybody apply, and then, and then everybody can equally bid on that and prove their worth. So I, I agree with John that funding for this project today is probably out of the question. But as John said, this would be a worthwhile project if we come up with a grant cycle. We encourage you, if we do, to, to submit and make a case for, for some, some of those funds. Go ahead, Aaron. Do you have a comment?
That sounds great. Thank you. I, I wasn't sure how to proceed with regard to that. We're certainly comfortable writing a proposal. We seek grants from foundation sources and government sources all the time. And we would gladly submit a proposal for your community benefits if you have a request for proposals. I wasn't sure when that's going to happen and whether the timing of that would perhaps dovetail with this project and allow us to do the work. We're hoping to do it in the late summer to early fall. And so I, I would certainly submit a proposal. As to the, the question about the appropriateness of the county taking the lead on this, just so that you know, I'm also talking with the city about this and we'll be talking with, with Brookfield as well. I, I think oftentimes each party waits for the other party to take the lead. So I encourage you to take the lead. And, you know, I, I think there is a strong argument to be made that this is, it should be a county priority. Ellsworth is unique as the, the county seat. And, you know, it's a service center hub for the region. Lots of people pass through Ellsworth and this trail is right close to the main street and in the library, which is one of those community assets. I'm sure it would get a lot of use and it wouldn't just be Ellsworth residents. And so, you know, there's definitely a benefit there. And not every community has the benefit of the Union River right out their back door.
Aaron, do you, do you offer in this easement conditions for use? In other words, we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to offer an easement that to put a power line up to there, for example?
No, different kind of easement. Yeah, this would be pretty streamlined and we're really talking mostly in concept right now. In, within a couple of weeks, I could easily bring you a draft of a, of a trail easement. But this is really, think of it as a streamlined version of a conservation easement. It's different than a utility easement or right of way, something like that. It's, you know, it is something that's recorded at the Registry of Deeds. And, and we, we work with easements in perpetuity. So it would be a forever kind of thing. It would simply specify, you know, the, the size of this, the, the relative location and the fact that, that you're granting to Frenchman Bay Conservancy the ability to invite the public on this property, on this particular trail. And then you can say what can and can't happen. And of course, it can get as detailed and complicated as you want from there. But we're inclined to keep it pretty simple and straightforward. And, you know, our attorney can draft the easement for you and then we can share the trail easement and you can have your attorney review it. And there's typically, we do this, you know, with landowners on a more complicated basis. And there's lots of back and forth. So there's, there's no rush.
Gentlemen, so maybe we approve this in concept today without taking action. And we take our official action once we see the easement. Once he brings that in, we'll approve and take official action. Then you want to handle it that way?
I agree.
Aaron, the deed to the old jail, there is a clause that says if they don't maintain that appropriately, we have the ability to take it back. Is that something we could have in the easement? That if, for some reason, in 10 years, that trail is never built, never maintained, that we would, the easement would cease or something?
I can certainly look into that. I, I feel like I can't answer that question on the fly, but I can let you know. I do want to be clear about easements, though. In this case, we would look for a community partner, you know, once the trail is, is built, you know, once the tread is well established and we've got some stabilization, so we don't have flooding that's going to erode it. I would want either the Ellsworth Guarding Club, who has already stepped forward, or, you know, local Boy Scout troop, Girl Scout troop, whatever it may be, to kind of be the, you know, like, the, the group that helps keep it going. FBC can do that as well. But a lot of times it's, it's usually the landowner and we look for local partners as well to, to help out with that.
Okay, so as you're constructing your easement, think about a clause that says it's got to be maintained once it's built.
Sure.
And that could affect continuance of the easement, failing to either build it and/or maintain it after it was built, okay? It would be something we would like to see in that easement. Gentlemen, correct?
Yep.
So it, it sounds like you're looking for action, Mr. Chair, so.
I'm not, excuse me, Paul. I'm looking for action today. I'm looking for simply a general consensus that we're going.
For the concept.
Right, for the concept. And that Aaron will bring this back at some point in the form of an easement. At that point, we'll take official action on whether or not we want to grant them access.
Yeah, so how's this for proposed language? Move to support the concept of an easement to support the Ellsworth Riverwalk Trail Project is outlined by Aaron Doherty. Period. That way, he, you know, we support the concept. It's up to him to return when he sees fit to solidify it. I don't want to put a timeframe on this.
You okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. That's fine.
And can I have your second for that?
Seconded.
For the time being, Aaron, does that suffice?
That's perfect. Yeah, that's exactly what I was hoping for. And I'll, I'll coordinate with Scott about next steps and when to come back before the, before all of you.
Yeah.
What to mention is the, the commission's probably going to want to make sure before we give an easement that everybody else has given their easement. So it's going to become a full project in that whole scope. But we can, we're all aware of that. We'll travel down that road later.
And, and I just, you know, I, I did not mention anything but support, you know, the concept of an easement at this point because I think it's way premature.
Right.
Yep, maybe we can all have a Zoom cocktail party and sign them all at the same time or something.
Maybe we meet in person, by the way.
Maybe, maybe someday that day will come. If nothing further, gentlemen, let's move on the motion. All those in favor, Commissioner Warnebacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself. Thank you, Aaron. We'll expect to see you sometime in the future with a draft easement for us, okay?
Very good. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Gentlemen, it's 10 o'clock. Do you want to take a break? You all set?
All set.
Okay, let's move on then.
Where public comment?
Is there anybody out there this morning would like to make a public comment? Hearing none. We moved item two.
I'm going to move to approve the minutes of the March 23rd, 2021 Commissioner's special meeting.
Seconded.
Seconded. Seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Commissioner Warnebacker?
Yes.
Mr. Parity?
Yes.
I am myself. Motion passed. Airport?
Morning.
Leroy? We have your monthly report. Gentlemen, any comment, questions or concerns with regards to Leroy's monthly report?
I'm ready to move and accept, to, to accept and file the airport manager's report as presented.
Seconded.
Moving seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Commissioner Warnebacker?
Yes.
Mr. Parity?
Yes.
I am myself. Motion carries.
I'm ready to make a motion on the next item since we've discussed it previously, unless the manager has anything to add to that.
No, other than the grants will be ready for signing, he's talking the 29th or 30th.
Wait a minute, I'm, excuse me, gentlemen, I'm confused. B is advertised for a position?
Too far down the road.
We need to take these one at a time. So are we ready to act on that?
Yes. Move to approve the advertising for a full-time airport manager, excuse me, airport maintenance position as requested.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Commissioner Warnebacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself. Motion carries. Now, are you ready, Leroy, with the next three items to submit grant applications? Are those ready for our action?
They're ready for the action. They're, the actual applications will be ready for signatures, the 29th to 30th. They're due in May 3rd or 5th or something like that. So he, he's working, the bids are, it was going out yesterday, I think, or the application for bids. He wanted, so tying all of this together, they'll also be on the 27th. We'll need to have a bid opening.
So gentlemen, I'd like to take up the next three and then discuss F separately.
I have a question before we take action on those three is are we likely to have the document in hand? I missed that part, Leroy. Are we likely to have the document in hand prior to our next meeting or no?
No. Unlikely, no.
Okay, so, so action is, is appropriate now because it's the same action we would be taking the next meeting?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, would you like all three of these together?
Oh, the federal grants, I'm, I'm thinking perhaps we should move on them independently.
Okay, so I'm going to move to, item C, I'm going to move to authorize the chairman to sign the new airport rotating beacon grant application one available.
Seconded.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Commissioner Warnebacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself. Motion carries.
The next item, I'm going to move to authorize the chairman to sign the airfield markings and no foam system grant applicant, application one available.
Seconded.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Commissioner Warnebacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
And I am myself. Motion carries.
Item C, item E, I'm going to move to authorize the chairman to sign the PCI survey and pavement management plan grant application one available.
Seconded.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Commissioner Warnebacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself. Motion carries. Now, let's talk about the application for the virus relief monies.
Okay, so F is a concessions virus relief money. It, it goes to, well, the only two people or two identities that could get it will be the rental car folks here. And it's after December 27th. So right now, the only people is. And it's after December 27th. So right now, the only people is Hertz. Looking forward, Enterprise, when they come back, they, they will be accepted. Now, all that being said, this is a the, it's only a, can I say only, two, just over $2,000.
And why, why, why are we involved in this, Leroy? I mean, why aren't they?
It, it, it's, it's the, it's the way the FAA is dispersing it or the government is dispersing the money. Um, I'm a little leery on this one, quite frankly. The county only gets 2% of this fund to administer it. And it looks like there's a lot of work to administer it to me. They want you to come up with a plan on how you're going to disperse the money. And we're talking, the whole money is only just over $2,000, and we're only going to get 2% of that. So I, I'm, I threw it out there because they're asking.
Hertz is asking?
Um, no, no, and I, I reached out to Hertz, and I have not got a response back. I reached out to him about a week and a half ago, a week ago.
Who's asking that one?
This is the government, the, the FAA folks are asking whether we want to apply for this concessions grant.
Right.
Go ahead, go ahead, Scott.
Leroy doesn't know this, but on my agenda notes, I probably should have put recommend for discussion based off of, because I knew Leroy was doing some more background check on this. Based on what Leroy's talking, if my opinion is that Hertz or any of the vendors haven't come forward yet, and we're pushing for a deadline. And this looks like a lot of work. And I can tell you from the grants I'm having to pick up, it's not fun. I would, my recommendation would be to not, not prove it.
Leroy, that's your decision to make because it's nothing for we as the county to do. You're going to have to do all of, all of footwork, so.
Right. And, and, you know, Scott and I have kicked this one around quite a bit. And it just, it looks like a lot of work for, you know, and I don't want to, I don't want to say that they're not worth it. But I, I did reach out to them. They have not gotten back to me. So, because one of the stipulations was is that they couldn't apply for any other grants now. If, if they've applied for some other grant money, you know, then they can't apply for this. So I put it in there and then did a lot more research and I, I think we should just kind of let it go.
So is this fair? Is, is this fair? The only folks that have asked us about this is the FAA. None of the concessions have asked them.
Correct.
So in my opinion, this is not ready for prime time and doesn't need any action.
And I'm, I'm just going to, because the FAA is asking me, they wanted, you know, they want an answer, and I'm just going to say we're going to decline it.
That's good.
Yeah, I just think it's a lot, you know, again, you know, I don't, I don't want to take any money out of the Hertz pocket, but, you know, they, they haven't stepped up with it. And it just seems like a lot of work to administer it for very little gain for us.
Only duplication of effort here, too.
Yeah, it looks like we're looking for money to give away.
Away. That, that's exactly where we're at. We're looking for money to give away.
And I, I just don't see the need, you know, maybe it'll come up later if we're requested by a concession, but we haven't been. And so I'm going to, I say we move on to the next item.
I would like, though, Leroy, if the record reflected that you withdrew your request for our approval.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, so, yes, I will withdraw.
Or, or what I could do is just move to take no action on this item. Does that do it?
You know, I want to support Leroy, but on the same token and whatnot, I don't want to justify these people coming to us later and saying, well, why didn't you, you, you submit your application for us? And I'm going to, I want to be able to say Leroy is, you know, is hesitant to, to do that based upon the amount of work.
Okay, how about, how about, because Leroy, Leroy, hey, here, how about we, I, I move that we take no action on this item based on the recommendation of the airport manager.
That, that I would support.
Yeah, I mean, this, this isn't necessarily about, just about the work, but we've had no requests and there's a deadline, so.
So I'm going to second Paul's motion.
Yep.
You all, you all, did you get that, Rebecca? Good. John, you all set with that?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Mr. Parity?
Yes.
I am myself. Motion carries. Anything else in the airport, Leroy?
Nope, that's it for me.
Then let's move on to D. Let's move on to Deeds. Good morning, Julie. Once Julie.
Good morning.
Velma is getting done, Julie, huh?
Yes.
She moving on to other employment other than the county or?
Another county.
Pardon?
She's going to Penobscot County.
Penobscot County, okay. Then, gentlemen, a motion's in, in order to accept her resignation.
I'm going to move to accept the resignation of Deputy Rich Darbdeeds Velma Jordan, effective April 9th. Thank her for her service and wish her the best of luck.
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself. Motion carries. Julie?
Yes.
Full-time clerk you're asking for and B, is that the replacement?
It, I need a full-time clerk.
Would you, would you have asked for the clerk if Velma had stayed?
No, but to replace the deputy, there's criteria to it. And, and you, it's not a direct hire.
Right, you wouldn't, you wouldn't make this person perhaps be a deputy, but it does fill that position that, that.
Yes, I'll be filling a position left by Velma, but it will not be my deputy position.
Right, I understand. Gentlemen, you understand?
Yeah, I'm going to move to advertise for a full-time clerk position as requested.
Seconded.
Discussion?
Where are we going to, where are we going to do the advertising on it?
Julie, how are you going to advertise for that?
Well, I'll have to post it in-house first, and then I'll do it on the county website. But most of the time when we, you know, if we have something, enough people are out there, so people are looking for it if they're interested. So they'll look on the website.
Well, well, the county has a, a sort of a policy outline for that, as I understand. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes.
Doesn't that include the, the media, Julie?
I, I mean, I can. It, it doesn't, you know, we haven't had to advertise, we haven't had to advertise outside for a very long time, so.
Thanks, Julie.
Well, I just want to make sure that, that, that the public is getting sufficient notice, Julie.
Yeah, I, no, and I understand that, but that's what I'm saying, though. We really have not had a physician that's gone outside of the pool for quite a while. I, I dare say five or six years, so.
I have no idea who it is, but I hope it's not your knitting club or something that only gets to. Okay, I, I think we understand. Gentlemen, anything further with your guys' the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself. Anything else from Deeds, Julie?
No, thank you. Nope, we're good. We're still busy.
Thank you for joining us.
Okay.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, gentlemen. First, a request approval and signature on the 2021 Town of Swans Island contract. And good morning, Sonny. Good to see you.
Morning. Gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
Is anything, is anything changed on our contract from the previous?
No, it's just, just the cost. And then, and it reflects the amount that the commission has approved to grant Swans Island.
Yeah.
This is, as far as I read this, this is consistent with our last action.
Absolutely, yes.
Yes.
So I'm going to move to sign the 2021 law enforcement contract with the Town of Swans Island as presented. And thank you for your patience, Mr. Sprague.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself. Motion carries. Sheriff?
Thank you. The second one requires permission to sell by bid two, 2011 Chevrolet Caprice Cruisers. Both of them are well in excess of 100,000 miles.
I'm going to move to sell by bid two, 2011 Chevrolet Caprice Cruisers as requested.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Sheriff, what's the process for doing the bid? Like, how does that all work?
Well, we'll put it in as many places as we can. They are always said by bid by, as is, where is type bids. We put them in the papers and we'll put them on our Facebook pages and we can put them on the county website to do that. Traditionally, or a lot of times, these are purchased by taxi cab companies that refurbish them and reuse them. So that's traditionally how we've done them. We've had, recently, we've traded most of the stuff that we had, but these being 10 years old, the trade value wasn't going to be there.
So when they, when you get the money on it, is it, does it go back in the, essentially in the account for future vehicle purchases or what happens?
This is dedicated. I think we showed it as revenue in this year's budget. I think it was $3,000 we showed in revenue, anticipated sale of these. But I, but I would encourage doing that in the future going on. It, we're transitioning into a different type vehicle, and those will be traded because of the discussions we've had previously, what the trade value will be by seeding, what these, these Cruisers are going to be worth.
You know, they were pickups, but we had good luck one time putting them on the front lawn with the four sales side. We couldn't get anybody to bid on them, but I always said you could sell a $3,000 car off your front lawn a lot faster. You could sell a $30,000 car, so. Gentlemen, motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself. Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen. That's all I have for today.
Thank you, Sheriff.
We'll move on to the jail.
Good morning.
Good morning. I just have one thing. Accept the resignation of Corrections Officer David McCarthy, effective April 2nd, 2021.
So moved.
Seconded? How long's he been with you, Tim?
I not quite a year.
Quite a year.
Full time, yes.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Further, Tim, you all set?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Good morning, Bob, R C C.
Good morning.
We have Bob's monthly report, gentlemen. Any questions, concerns, or comments?
I'm going to move to accept and file the R C C's direct, the R C C Director's March monthly report as presented.
And I will second that request. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes. And I, I'd just like to add that I, I really appreciate these written reports like this. I think it makes the meeting go further and, and we, you know, if we have questions, we can ask. I, I really appreciate this. Thank you.
That motion carries. B has been removed. Which was advertised for an open position. Is there a chance that that's not going to have to occur, Bob, or?
Well, to, to break it down, she's gotten two different job offers now, and one is the one that she really wants, but they told her it could take up to 11 months.
It just isn't, it just isn't timed up.
What, what I was hesitant to do was jump ahead and, and look at hiring somebody, then her situation changed, and then, you know, we didn't. And we ended up with an extra employee that we may or may not, or if it all falls through, then she doesn't take either, either position, and she stays on board. What do we do with the new hire? And I think we just hold off a little bit and wait to see what, what prevails out of her, her offers.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Moving on now to maintenance, we have Did we get your report, Dennis?
Yes.
Yep, we, we have gotten his report.
Yep.
Any comments, questions, or concerns about the month maintenance report, gentlemen?
No, I'm going to move to accept and file facility director's March report as presented.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none.
I noticed the new readers there. Looks like that's a nice addition. Yeah, it's a good addition.
It's been a really, it's, it's been a really good upgrade for us.
Is there any other spots that, I mean, is that project, how, are we done with it now or we still have a few more spots?
After this upgrade, I think we're ready to call it. And budget for improvements as they occur, because I think there'll be one or maybe two at a time going forward.
You're looking more and more like a sea captain, I notice, every time we have a zoom. I'm looking more like the side of a house, and you're looking more like a sea captain.
Covid.
Yeah, I think I'd rather go your direction than mine, so.
All right, gentlemen, moving on to our.
Thank you.
Moving on to our treasures. Direct your attention to our March warrant memo.
I'm going to move to sign the treasurer's warrant as presented.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any comment? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself. Motion carries. We have we have the accounts receivable. Report, any comments, questions, or concerns?
I, I have one comment. Leroy is still on here. He's done a great job at chasing down some of those smaller items that were sitting out there for a while on the airport, so. Yeah, I'd like to give him some public credit for taking that task on.
Thank you.
I'm still learning, and I learned, you know, something, every time I look at this, I, again, I really appreciate the, the memo to help us, you know, to key us in on certain areas. So I'm going to move to accept and file a financial report as presented by the county administrator.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself.
So the R C C on our our list of the past dues, the do we send a little notice to Amherst about the 64917 that we think is R C C?
I can take that, Bob. That's, that's actually, that was an issue, a little trio, web glitch. That, that was paid. And so that should not be on there. I reconciled yesterday and met with Joyce and, and Bob, and we got that taken care of. So that one's all set.
We, we usually do on the quarterly billing. If we don't receive an invoice, we give them on the following quarter, hey, past due. General reminder, hey, you owe us some money.
How about, how about our Hertz for 225 bucks? It's.
Yep, Leroy's chasing, Leroy's chasing, valiantly chasing Hertz after that. Seems to be a connection with the right person of contact. Again, I think when things pick up and we have to, we'll add it to the bill when we send it for the next, for this year's sign. That's the sign money for advertising.
Yeah.
On the electronic board.
Okay.
The other one you'll see is Jet East for 350. We figured that one out. That was a little confusion in the payments recorded versus the invoicing. So again, during the transition, Jill left the airport, so we got that figured out. That check should be on the way. And with regards to silver. And with regards to silver, I took silver off of the aging and I booked it. Booked it in another spot. It's still on the books, but just so that it, you know, doesn't continually stick out like a sore thumb on our agent report. We'll go for the normal accounting process to to take care of that. That takes care of all.
I really appreciate the quarterly financial report, Scott. It's really nice to have it.
Is that working out?
All organized and, yeah. I'm not going to pretend that I understand everything in it, to be honest, but I, I do my best to kind of work through it and look at it and but I appreciate it.
Ditto.
Well, you know how much I hate to talk about finances, so you know, we need to, I'll force myself to have a conversation if we need to, but.
You, you intend on submitting these quarterly?
Yes, yes.
I wonder if you, I wonder if you could add a community benefits report and a TIF report for those quarterly update.
Oh, yeah, that, your spreadsheet.
You have on current status on the CBA and TIF account.
Okay, yep, yep. CB, I think, was in there, but the TIF, yeah, the TIF and the UT was not, so.
I didn't see the CBA.
It was in there.
Okay, anything further? Hearing now, let's move on then to an update. Hopefully some positive information, Scott, on this Christmas fund here.
I check the buckets every morning and nothing's fallen from the sky yet. So, and I'm not, it's been a quiet subject the last two or three days. Most of the talk now that I hear is in general conversation, you know, amongst communities. You know, for instance, Julie was in the other day and I happened to mention it to her and she was unaware of it, so I gave the number to her. Yeah, I think, I think a lot of communities, they'll be kind of surprised when they look in their checkbook some morning and it's, you know, this develops and it's sitting there. So I have, I have really no further information, unfortunately. I think this is the one to try to figure out.
So frustrating though, because it's an enormous amount of money. It's like nobody knows how to spend it. It's just.
Well, I hope it's not as complicated as that, you know, the FEMA grant, which we, you know, we had, we had tasked the treasurer with to keep track of COVID expenses. Rebecca and I had a short Zoom meeting with the individual that, that was the best advocate to, to go over that. I'm going to apply those expenses, but I'm here to tell you, we're probably not going to get much back. You know, and, and it really equates to including payroll, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of $60,000 to $70,000 amongst the jail, the county, and the airport. It really is much more restrictive than originally thought or communicated, but I'm going to try my best to push it through and see what happens. I think in the end, if we can't claim this one, there's a good chance we might be able to claim it against those pennies from heaven if, you know, the Christmas gift that ever comes through.
Okay, so I guess the news is, is no news, no news.
And, and they haven't, again, they haven't attacked that little asterisk that says, you know, state and local governments will not be subjected to these activities only. Like a little more clarification in the process, but I think when this takes off, it'll, it'll take off quickly. It'll be a big conversation, whether the MCC or Maycam or, or, you know, Maygo or any of those other activities, so.
Okay, gentlemen. Let's go on to the discussion. Reference the, this year's tan.
Yep. Again, like we discussed, or I think I sent an email afterwards that for our last meeting was, you know, my hesitation was in, in not pursuing the tan, continuing with it was, when are those monies coming? And as I saw it sat down and thought about it, well, the easy solution is we'll just, and I checked with Miller, he's in, he's in agreement if we do the short term borrowing. So when we get to that point, that should buy me enough time that if we're at that point and there's no definitive indication of those monies coming, we may have to look to pursue the tan.
So you're thinking we'll do, well, we'll, you're thinking that in the end we might do the UT loan first to give us a little bit of time?
Yeah, if I, yeah, if the money show up in the next, oh, well, we still have one point, almost 1.4 million cash flow. I know we've got to give the jail their, their quarterly payment coming up here. So, you know, that's a, that's 150, 160,000. Yeah, I think, I think we're good. We're good probably for another month, month and a half of that, because by that time there'll be another jail payment. Then I'll look to do the UT and I think if that money's coming, by the rules that I'm reading, it should be here by then. It's supposed to be 60 days after signing. Yep. So at this time, it's, yeah, we're going to use the UT first and, and go from there.
So even if we don't know how to spend it, we'll have it in the bank.
Right, right, right. We'll have it for cash flow. Right, yeah, yeah.
I think that's a good plan. In other words, we could borrow up to what, half a million from UT?
We could probably under, under that, if I needed to borrow a little bit more in order to buy time for the tan, we could probably maybe double that. I don't want to scare Miller. Well, he's not on it, so. We could probably, you could easily go 750. I don't really want to, but unless for good reason, and I think Miller would share that same sentiment, so, but yeah. But half million would buy, should buy us enough time to go through the whole tan process and get things going. Yep.
Okay. Then let's move on to Scott's ask for a discussion and further discussion with a job description for a finance manager. Scott?
Yep. Well, I have listed it as a finance management position. I would like to be a finance manager, hopefully develop into a finance director if not currently capable. We simply need some need some leadership out there. I need some continuity. It's getting more and more difficult for me to do it from this desk. It's always been difficult. And it's really, for me, it's one of those final pieces for the puzzle to solidify Hancock County government. For now, for the future. You know, we, as, as we tried with the treasurer's position, we gave it a valiant effort. So second set of eyes, there are things such as taking on the airport, which has created more work for Pam and myself. With regards to finances, you know, I, I think I have, I have exhausted all my efforts to push the limits of, of the staff out there now. And I, and I, I can tell you that that they, I think they have reached their limit and, and, and that's, that's no detriment to, you know, no detriment, it's not the word I'm looking for. You know, that's, that's not to say they don't have the abilities to function. We, we know Pam does a great job. But when it comes to reconciling, when it comes, which is finding mistakes and making sure things add up, when it comes to the ability to recognize those mistakes and be able to fix them in the natural process beyond just knowing, well, a debit goes to the left and a credit goes to the right. It's the knowledge to know if I, if I have an issue in accounts receivable, then nine times out of 10, it's going to affect sales. I need somebody that knows accounting. Without, you know, and I can teach that. And I need somebody that's willing to teach. And I need a strong personality that's going to be able to slow things down out there and make things, keep things effective, keep things efficient, but help with some of the accuracy issues that we're facing.
I think, for me, it's, I see the need for this. I also think that we need to do some work on, on, you know, whether it's a charter or something to, to, you know, to I can't decide what comes first. I think this comes first. And, you know, then once we get this up and going, then, you know, we need to, you know, start talking about, you know, some of the changes that we would make and, and if we work on a charter. Because I, I, I really think that the treasurer's position is, you know, becoming more obsolete and frankly, I, I, I don't see that it's working, although I'm, again, I'm very new. But I support the concept of this. I, I, I read this over. Do I think it needs some refining? Probably yes, but we won't know that till, you know, we start actually seeing, you know, who walks through the door and, and we get further along in this. So I think this is a great start. I can't recommend any changes till, you know, we see how it develops. But, but I, but I do think that this is part of a bigger picture.
But I agree with that, Commissioner Parity, and, and I think the board in general agrees with that, while I would hope, because I think your actions have kind of spoken to that regard. You know, yes, if, if the elected treasurer position remains, and that's really not what this is about, but it is, it does work. It doesn't work independently of it. It works within the structure of, of the finance office. You know, whether, with that, that capacity of that individual to determine it or leave the results up to an election is, is a scary thought, you know. I, I don't think it's a responsible one. So, but at the same token, if the public wants an elected treasurer, I think you handled that with the decision that was, you know, the course that was, the action that was taken earlier this year. I think that's more than, more than fair.
And, you know, my, you know, I really think that it's just simple things like financial reporting, you know. That motion was to accept and file as presented by the county administrator. That really should be by the county finance director. So there's another set of eyes and, and, you know, that's, that's an internal control that I think is, is needed here. You know, not that it's needed, but it, it's, I think you understand for, for it just makes more sense and is more proper, I would say. But I, again, I, I, I support this because I, I, I think that eventually we're going to have to move in the direction that we've just discussed.
Yeah, I think it is needed. I think that is the appropriate word to use because I can't, you know, unless I document it at all. The, the report that you got wasn't just prepared by me from a set of numbers that were all set.
No.
It took a lot of, it took a lot of reconciling and tweaking in order for me to get there, because I don't want to send you something that I'm not confident that is, that is accurate. For, for example, you know, the AR and working with that and trying to bring that. You know, so again, this is, this is something, the amount of work that, that kind of control issue that I, I am doing, I am performing, overseeing, those, that's a lot of trust that you have in one individual. And while I'm very competent, my, you know, my honesty, my worthiness, that doesn't, that doesn't put Hancock County in position in the future, you know, should some, should something happen. And that would, I left or Pam left or, or anybody else was here.
How soon do you want to advertise for the position?
I'd like to advertise immediately. And the other part to all this though is, because I'd like to see what, what we get back for results. I know the city of Ellsworth is looking for at least two positions similar to this. What I said the other day, Northeast Harbor, although I think they're closing theirs out. And Southwest Harbor are all looking for. Those are the ones that I know of. So, yeah, they're not out there, you know, a dime a dozen. Again, I would, you know, again, simply advertise, see what we get and see if something fits and we make a choice from there. I don't want to, I don't want to put around fake square hole situation out there. That's not going to work. I'm pretty confident in knowing what, what the county needs out there. So that's, that's what we, that's what I hope I get, some semblance of.
So you're looking for approval of this job description as well as, as to move forward with the advertising?
Yes, yes. Yep. If you're comfortable with the job description, I agree. It's a, it's a work in progress. And yes, that, if that's all set, the next step would be for me is to advertise.
That's a problem I have when I look at the job description is, is a lot of it is becoming familiar. And once you become familiar, it doesn't have a job connected to it. For example, you got to learn GAAP, you got to learn GASP. If you understand what those are and, and you're, you're able to process a GASP directive, then it's fine, but there's things like payroll and time recording and, and journal entries and reconciliations and audits and budgets. Well, first of all, these tasks are already being done by somebody else. Is this person going to take it over? And if so, what's the other person going to do?
Well, that's.
Some of these things are annual. In other words, we do the audits, you assist with the audits once a year, you assist with the budget preparation. It's a long process, but once, once the, it's done. And I just kind of figure out if I was this person and I became knowledgeable about the obligations here, I have to, what am I going to do? What do I do for 40 hours a week?
Well, that right there is exactly why I think this is connected to, you know, a charter, because there's certainly a need for it. But in the, in the, under the legislation that we're currently operating under, it creates exactly the scenario that the chair has outlined. So that's what I was wrestling with of what comes first. I still think this comes first because if it, if it doesn't, well, I, I can see, quite frankly, I can see it both ways, but in my mind, this comes first. You know.
And, and you're right, and it does, Commissioner. I feel it does very strongly because here's, here's the issue. Is that, is if you don't take this action, I don't think you know properly what to expect or, or the direction that you want the charter to go in. And there's an assumption here that the treasurer is going to do the work. Well, we've already been down that road more than once. Been down that road since I've been here. Gentlemen, I'm doing all this work. Commissioner Clark, to answer your questions, there is, there is some duplicate, there's a lot of duplication there. That's exactly what needs to happen when it comes to accounting. You need to have a second set of eyes reviewing things. Some of these, that's why when I, at the very first one, the role of finance manager will be expected to learn and maintain. I have somebody out there that can make the widgets right now. If that widget comes out backwards, I'm the one that catches it. I'm the one that fixes it. I'm the one that sets it up. And while we do annual audits, those annual audits only goes as smoothly as your preparation up to. In other words, we're doing monthly reconciliations now. When I came here, it took six months, a better part of six months, pretty much constantly for me to straighten out the books and chase all the tails that were left. You now, one of the reasons, one of the reasons your meetings go much slower aside from a highly qualified mission is the fact that we now know the numbers. I can tell you for a fact, there was no confidence in Commissioner Clark and you, Sheriff, you maybe had the same frustration. There was very little, if any, confidence in the numbers because nobody knew where they were. That should not exist today.
Yeah. Oh, Scott, what is the difference between this position that you're envisioning here and the one in the county that the city of Ellsworth is presently looking for?
Well, you know, I think they're kind, in talking with them, because I reached out to Jen, because I was like, you're leaving. And in talking with her, and then I read the article in the paper, the Ellsworth American, I think they're kind of a little bit in flux as well. They, they identified it as a finance director, which that's what she is. But they're looking to solidify things, have that backup plan. I think they saw what happened when Tammy left. You know, there was, there was no backup. There was nobody to really, you know, Jen had Jen learned on with Tammy before she left and and did a great job following up. So I think they're still looking to see, and they pretty much stated in the Ellsworth American was that they're looking to see what they get. Depending on what they get for applications may determine the direction and what they do with that person. And that's sort of what I'm looking for here.
Would the applicant for that job be similar to the applicant for this position?
If I found a finance director, I'd be ecstatic. One that we could, that would fit with our base scale.
Are we going to be competing with Ellsworth for the same person?
Yeah, you are. That's why I said you're going to be with Northeast. Uh, yeah, you are with, that's why I said you're gonna be with Northeast Harbor and, um. Uh, Southwest Harbor, yeah, yeah.
What's Ellsworth paying, going to pay for this position? Have they, have they determined?
I, I don't know. I don't know. Again, we're, you know, we're sort of restricted by our our base scale structure. That is, that is a concern of mine. My thought process here is. If I can find somebody and they're a qualified candidate, if I can hire them and get them to come in, you know, in the fifties, um. That'd be, that would be great. Because we really can't, right now, I really can't go much higher. If I found a fully qualified finance director. Um, and somebody that was just like, whoa, walking off the street and and take this on. Um, I'd come to you and I'd probably be looking at close to the sixty.
Of course, biggest problem for me is we're already paying twenty thousand for a second position there and getting nothing for it.
What's that?
We have a second position in the treasurer's office that we're paying twenty thousand, ten thousand salary, another ten grand for, uh, health insurance.
Oh, oh, oh.
And we're getting nothing for it. And, you know, and now we're going to add another fifty, sixty thousand on top of that. So we're really.
Well, you budgeted some monies there, though, that that's why I've kind of waited. Um, and by the time we go through the process and hiring, you're probably looking at maybe June. Julyish. I would hope maybe earlier, maybe not. Um, so those are the funds that were budgeted for the, for the treasurer's position that. Um, you know, for that position that, uh, are available. Now, from there, if it comes down to the budget time, uh. If I have to take a look at at doing some things in my office to restructure, I'm more than willing to do that. Especially if I have the right person.
Well. A- again, it's like chicken and egg thing. You know, I I share the chairman's, uh, concerns, but. Now, how do we rectify him? I don't, I don't see. Um, I I I just don't see another avenue or responsible avenue to go down to. Um, you know, there, there's a lot of moving pieces here. Where do you start? I think it's here.
Well, it is. So let me ask you, can you ask it this way, then, a little bit of reverse? Are the things from the county administrator role? That are not getting done, but you need to. That you would like to address. And maybe this is a discussion for another day, but my reason I'm asking that is because is if you don't take this action and we don't bring somebody in, then I continue to do it.
Well, yeah. Well, he here is, you know. I'm used to, uh, you know, quite a bit. A different form of government, for lack of a better term, where where a lot of the financial responsibility is delegated to to a professional. As elected officials. We're not professionals, you know, some may have stronger knowledge of these things, but we're not the professionals. And I think because we're down in the weeds. Uh, you know, it's, it's holding back, you know, us making progress and and, you know, like. Like a charter or, you you know, some of those things are. I just, I really think that it it would be. I'd like to see the commission at more of a ten thousand foot level as opposed to in the weeds, because a lot of times when you're in the weeds, you lose. You lose that perspective of ten thousand feet, so. Um, I mean, in the form of, in Bar Harbor, I thought it worked very well. And, um. I see that that's the direction we need to go, especially for continuity, you know. What you have, other than myself, you have two, you know. Seasoned commissioners. What if you only had one? What if you didn't have any? You you know, that's, those are the kind of worries that I have and. You you know, a solid structure like that allows for some of that to happen, you know, I don't know, I just see. If we don't professionalize this to, I just see some exposure there. Is it gonna happen? I don't know that, but, uh, it it has happened elsewhere.
Well, Scott, where would you suggest paying from this? It's not in the treasurer's budget.
Part of it is, though.
Part of it is.
A part of it is some savings from there. So, I mean, it would, it should be a position under the treasurer, in the treasurer's budget. So I think there's, there's enough monies to pay for most, if not all of it this year. Um, I will say, as as Paul was talking, that I did reach out to somebody. Um. Who may or may not, at this time, they're just too busy. Um, I was looking at it as, you know, somebody, a part-time person. If I could find a part-time person that would be able to come in there and do what we've done. I would, I would seriously address that consideration. Right now is not a good, a good time to ask that person. I did ask the person. It's not a good time for that person right now.
That's kind of a frig, though, when you have a part-time, part-time of supervising a full-timer, which this, this is gonna be supervising the finance coordinator, correct?
Well, technically, that's what the treasurer did. I mean, or was the treasurer's position was supposed or is intended to have complete oversight of. The financial office from a really, could be a part-time position, so. Um, but I I don't subscribe to that theory. This, but it would, this again would depend on the position, I mean, in the, in the individual. I mean, if the individual is able to accomplish that. It doesn't, I have no intention of removing myself completely, and I'm. I'm reluctantly willing to continue, um, under the current structure. I'm just, as as your administrator, because. The the professional. Uh, financial person side of me is saying, uh, I can do that with my eyes closed. But I, on the other side, for instance, on the other side, we're still trying to find out whether or not we've got, you know, all that money coming. Once we do, how are we gonna spend it?
Yeah.
And that's gonna be a huge project in itself.
So, yeah, I, so I just wanna say that I definitely support, um. Putting it out, uh, for the position and. I think, uh. Scott's role in keeping tabs on everything during all this has been great, but. It's not sustainable, so we need to come up with a real solution. To me, this is the real solution. And Scott can still be the, uh. Uh, top dog looking over it, uh, is the second set, you know, with the second set of eyes. But, you know, the county administrator is bigger than, uh, being. The, uh, county accountant. So I want him to be free to. Work on other projects and not had to, uh, put in forty percent of his time. Or more, who knows? Just keeping the books. So I support it.
Yeah, we're gonna advertise this, John. We're gonna need to set a compensation, so we're gonna have to decide that today. Because you can't, you can't hire somebody if you can't tell them what you're gonna pay them.
Well. Um, I I. I somewhat agree, but. I think what we'd be doing here, well, first of all, we'd, we gotta take action on the job description and authorize. Advertising for a position just to see, you know, get our feet wet and. I. It's a new position, we'd, you know, again, chicken and egg. I think that, you you know, we're not authorizing anybody to hi, you know, anybody to hire somebody. We're just authorizing. Potentially authorizing advertising and see what happens. I think that's your plan, right?
Yes, yes, that's what I would like to do.
Yeah, and then, you know, then, depending on what happens, it is a loosey-goosey. Um, way of doing it, but quite frankly, I don't see a better way right now. Uh, you know, unless we set up a whole structure, and we're not there yet. So I'm inclined to support this. It's gonna take some discussion in the next meeting or the meeting after that, you know, once we get. You know, somebody actually walked through the door and and Scott sees what's out there and. And in his mind, solidifies, uh, what his recommendations are. Um. So I.
Are you fine with pay with pay is, uh, you know, commensurate with experience?
Yes.
What's that mean?
Uh. Essentially, it means, uh, you know, based on your experience, based on your qualifications. Um. Yeah, will determine what what range, rather than the naming a specific range and scaring anybody. You know, that's got a, that's got a, you know, two-edged sword. You could attract people, you could scare them away. Um, somebody might be enticed and, you know, might come in and and, you know, if you put fifty thousand on it, all others fifty thousand. But when they come in, they start looking at benefits, the conversation, the work atmosphere. They realize it's a fit, and they may say, nah, I'm like, yeah, yeah, okay, it's in the fifties. I'll, I could sell it for fifty-five and. And are we gonna work up to something more?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, Paul, this is way too loosey-goosey for me. First of all, if I had a good job as a finance coordinator somewhere, but I wanted to go to a larger organization or something that paid a little better. I'm not sure I would risk my position to apply for something that. Even by this discussion today, we might not even hire. I mean, just to see what's out there. I mean, that's, I don't think that's a good way to attract. A good applicant by saying, well, we're just interested to see who's out there. You know, you can apply if you wanna, but I don't know, we're not sure if we really wanna hire anybody. I mean, that's, that's a, that's a poor position to start from. And. Uh. This commensurate with experience, well. What if Michelle Beal come back and says, yeah, huh, in my, my experience, I'm, I'm a hundred and twenty thousand? You know, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But but conversely. Um, you you know, you might be looking at. At somebody who is leaving a position, looking to scale back a little bit, a little less responsibility. And look at something part-time or or, because we don't, y- you know. We haven't fully flushed this out. You're, you're absolutely correct, Mr. Chair. I, I, uh, I just don't know. How to get started. I mean, we're, we're in a, we're in a tough spot with, you you know. The structure right now.
I can clarify, one of those concerns is the fact that it's not a matter of that whether or not we wanna hire anyone. No, we need to hire somebody. I mean, that's, that's my opinion, is that you need, we need to hire somebody. So there's no question about that. Now, whether, the question of loosey-goosey becomes whether or not we find the right person. That would regards to, you know, commensurate with experience or putting a number on there. I'm, I'm open to suggestions. Um, but pay is commensurate with experience. You see that. In a lot, probably just as many job applications or advertising as you do with a salary range, you know?
Yeah, I, I feel like lots of positions like this, you wouldn't necessarily see the salary listed on the. On the job listing. But I don't know, that's just my opinion, I guess.
Yeah, oh, I I'm just, you know. Like, I I know of some finance directors elsewhere that, you know, that they're looking to scale back a little bit. Um, this might, that might be a good way, because I don't, I honestly don't think we're. In our current structure, that we have a, you know. A hundred and twenty or a hundred and fifty thousand dollar finance director coming in. I, I.
You know, because I think you're gonna have a lot of other people going, where's? You know? Can I make this recommendation, then? Could, could you see, you know, I think all three of you are kind of still pondering this. I don't need a decision today. This is, this, I'll be honest with you, this actually went a lot better than I anticipated. So I don't, I would highly suggest, let's table it till the next, um. Till the next meeting and, uh, go from there. Let's, let, give it some more time. We're looking at the job description, maybe. You know, come in individually, call me, email me, whatever, come in and talk to me and, uh, have those conversations. And see if we hit a better spot, uh, the next meeting.
Well, I I'm, I'm fine with that, but I I'm gonna tell you right now. I, I really think we need to reassure the applicant that we're serious about this position. That we compensate as best we can, and if they beat that, that level of credit. So I would like to see that the next, next discussion. Scott, you have done some research as to what these finance people are getting around the county. Come up with a, a recommended. Uh, range, if you will. And I've said, gentlemen, all along, the day that Scott Atkins walks out of here without this, uh, finance coordinator, this county's in trouble. We do not have the depth in our finance department that we need. And I've said for, I've said for the five years I've been here that we need this. So, you know, I'm ready to hire somebody. But I don't want it on this loosey-goosey situation that you were talking about, Paul. I'd like to see. I'd like to see us, if we're serious, let's get serious. Let's get the details together. And let's tell the public that if you're gonna apply and you meet the qualifications and we like you and it fits, we're gonna hire you. This is, we're gonna pay you.
Yeah, and I think that's, uh, sorry, Paul, I, I think that's exactly what the conversation was. So I think all you're missing, I think all three of you are really on the same page. All that's missing is maybe a salary range, or I can, I can do that. I can check around, which I will. Um, we're probably not gonna be able to afford what others are paying, and that is more on just basically our own scale. Um, but certainly, if that's, if that's what makes this move, uh, much easier, I would. I'll tell you, I would, I would feel more comfortable if there was a little bit of a salary range on there. Um, I'm, I'm really not opposed to it.
Well, I I I, I guess I agree.
I just don't be stuck to it.
Yeah, there, you know, and and the only way to do that is to get. More ser, you know, get, do more research, you know, how other counties and municipalities. The other side of it is, we need to have a plan on how, I mean, I don't. I I I wouldn't support, and I don't think either one of my colleagues would support. Doing this if we didn't have a plan to, you know, we don't wanna pay two people to do this. You know, which we're e- essentially doing with an elected treasurer. I mean, not now, but, you know. I think that if we move forward with this, we, there's another step, and that's, you know, getting serious about. A charter that outlines the structure that that we're hoping to get.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know myself on this, but.
There's a lot of work in putting together a charter, and it's too bad, the only reason we're doing it is to address the treasurer's position.
Yeah.
And I say there's another way to address that, and I know how John feels, but. Basically. It's a five dollar a week job. Take it or leave it. This case, you're, basically, that's, that's still staying in minimum wage for the amount of time involved in it, so.
I think it's a great discussion that would be, um, better suited maybe to budget time, that, yeah, to take a look at that when we wanna review and. See what our structure looks like, and hopefully we got a person on, on board, but, um, yeah, no, this, again, this went much better than. I had anticipated, uh, much and, um, yeah. I'll do, I'll do some work and let's talk about it again next meeting.
Do we wanna take action on the, on the job description, or, you know, might that. Change as you do your research?
Yeah, let's leave it open and and I mean, it could be, yeah, it could be something I find in research, could be something, I mean.
I think you can get us the, uh, the idea, the, uh, range for, uh, the next meeting, Scott?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's look at it all again, then, maybe then we can do the, uh, approval.
Yep.
And I'd like to see, if not in the job description, I would like to have a discussion on, on the division of duties within that office. If you're gonna have two people. Who is literally going to do what? What are they going to share? Whose responsibility for what and so on? Because, again. If this person comes in tomorrow and knows everything they need to know, what the hell are they gonna do? I mean, there's, there's no training involved. So what are they physically gonna do for forty hours? So I'd like to see. I'd like to see the details of exactly, you know, what the work is going to be. Given the fact that we have a finance coordinator and a finance manager.
Well, you know, I quite frankly see. You know, just because I'm u- used to seeing out of Bar Harbor, what, I see a job there. Um. And and I think, um. So that doesn't worry me as much as, as, you know, structure. And and again, I I don't. I'm not a person who likes to get in the weeds of, of the structure, because I think. You know, you know, the, the administrator or manager needs some leeway to, to have. Um, you know, have some say in that and. So.
Well, Paul. We gotta remember, we have a finance coordinator who's been there several years now. Very comfortable in the work she's doing and whatnot. And we've gotta make sure that she is, she understands what this move is all about. And it's not, and she doesn't find it threatening or intimidating or, or treading on her perceived authority or whatever. So I, I think.
Her, her input's gonna be important.
Okay, so by general consensus, Scott, you'll come back at a later, later date with more specific information on area uh, wages, at least.
Yep.
We'll discuss this further.
Yep.
That's good.
You wanna leave it at that, gentlemen?
Yep.
Yeah, that, that ma, that makes sense to me, and, and more time to think, too, you know, because I have been listening to, you know, to everybody's comments and, and, you know, it's gonna take a while to digest all that, because I, I, you know, I've never had to develop the structure. I've been involved in the structure. Um, so it, it's learning for me also.
Well, if you have any questions, like I said, I'm, uh, you know, phone call away, uh, up in the office, uh, whatever.
All right, then, very good. Let's, uh, look for this in the, in the future, as a future agenda item.
All right, thank you.
Anything else before we adjourn? The next meeting is, uh, April twentieth, special meeting?
Uh, I, I just, this discussion for me is prompted, you know, sort of a, you know, a ten thousand foot discussion that I, I don't know when to have. Um, is, you know, sort of, almost like a goal session that we can all agree on, you know, like, um, what is our goal for, for, you, you know, the structure? What are, and, that almost needs, seems like it needs to be something facilitated by s- someone who has experience, because I don't think any of us, or I certainly don't have the experience in doing that, so. Um, and I think it lends itself to the discussion we just had. So I, you know, I don't know if this is something we do in the fall, or summer would be nearly impossible, but I just think that it's something we need to, to do at some point in the future.
Are you talking about globally and throughout county government, or are you talking about just finances?
No, globally through, through, you know, county government, because you're right, Mr. Chair, you, you know, we just took apart one, you know, one section of it, but it really, it really encompasses more than that, because a, a lot of stuff, the stuff that we talked about would eventually need a charter change. And, and, you know, before we could even be ready to move forward on such a thing or propose such a thing, we, we need to all be on board. And I don't, you know, there's, a- and we don't have all the information to be on board, because we don't, we don't know it. We don't have the experience in, in setting up this kind of thing. So someday in the future, it's not tomorrow, it's not a month from now, we need to think about some. I think it needs to be a facilitated discussion with somebody. It's gonna cost us, you know, probably five hundred to a thousand dollars to, to, you know, to have somebody come in and do it. But, um, I, I, I think it's something we have to do. Otherwise, we're gonna be, we're gonna keep doing what we just did. I don't know, I don't know if you understand. I'm having a hard time describing it, but, um.
I think I know it. I think I, I, I have a pretty good understanding of what you're, what you're stating, and I, and I would agree. And it may be something that, once you do it once, it may not be an annual thing.
Yeah.
Every other year. But for me, I'm sitting here, I'm just thinking, you know, what the best time would be. You'd want time, because like, again, every decision with, is affected by the money, and the money comes through the budget. So, you know, it'd get through Christmas times and maybe early in the year. You know, in the fall, it's after a budget, it's kind of, it's kind of a little late, unless you wanna, you could review what you did prior and how you got set up, and then that launches the next stage. So I, I think it's something that should be brought up again. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's something, Scott, that you need to keep in the back of your mind and maybe organize this, you know, as we get closer and whatnot.
Yeah. I, I, I fully agree, and it's, that's the type of thing I would like to see my position elevate to. Um, in order to do that, I gotta get the finance work off my desk.
Well.
Paul pointed out, that's how it circles right, right back around, though.
And, and, you know, please remember that I'm very green here, so, you know, I don't know the timing. I've not been through a budget cycle. I don't know.
Right.
You, you know, there's a lot that I don't know and that I still need to learn, but I, I just bring that up, that, you know, that might help us.
Okay, very good. We understand. Gentlemen, a motion to adjourn is in order.
You say eleven oh five, you're on overtime.
So moved.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor of Commissioner Wambach?
Yes.
Commissioner Parry?
Yes.
Me and myself, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.